If you please stand for invocation.
Father, we thank you again for the opportunities that we have as Americans to gather together in freedom and do business for you. We pray that you would be with each one of these council members tonight, the mayor, direct every move that we make, help it to further your cause and our cause and for the betterment of this city, and we thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll convene our meeting, City Council at six thirty-seven. Roll call. Don Rawlins?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Misty Cottle?
Here.
Bill Sargent?
Here.
Nita Lowery?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Mike Nelson?
Here.
Kira Hungate?
Here.
Our city attorney, Tom Kicklack. Our city clerk, Marsha Hungate is absent this evening. Christie's taking minutes. And I'm Mayor Roseanne. The adoption of the agenda, um, my council, I sent you two items. Um, if you've got those, we're looking at new business. Item three will be budget adjustment request, um, and then, um, with a resolution that goes along with that. Number four, under that, will be a purchase, uh, discussion for purchase of a new vehicle and approval to go forward on state bid. And then I'd like to add one more. So item number five, under new business, is, um, a request to continue with a, with a maintenance, um, agreement with a contractor on the city administration building. And, uh, we've talked a little bit about that in the past, but I'll bring some more information to you. So I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add those three items to new business.
I make that motion.
Okay, Misty?
I second.
Second. Kira, was it? Okay, Kira. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign. Approval of our minutes? For the May City Council meeting. And I'll entertain a motion to that.
I make a motion that we approve the May City Council meeting minutes as now.
Okay, Misty, with the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Kira, second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign. All right, we have a public forum at, at this time. Uh, before I speak to that, though, uh, we have a young man with us, Brady Drain. He's sitting in the back, back here. I might ask him to stand so we can all see him a little better here up forward. He's working on his citizenship badge, and so he's here observing the city council meeting, taking copious notes, and will report to his, uh, his group sometime in the near future. So welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you. All right, our public forum, um, it's two minutes per speaker. All remarks will be addressed to the city council. The council and the mayor may ask questions of the speaker or respond to questions or comments. No official action will be taken tonight on anything in the public forum. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? Okay. We'll go on to business reports. John Riley, library?
Hello. Uh, two items I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. Number one is that the library is looking to become a passport acceptance center as a, well, partly to be as, as a service to the area and also as a revenue source. Looks like, just from the initial review, that we meet all the qualifications to be able to, basically it involves, uh, receiving new passport applications, processing them and sending them on to the National Passport Agency, um, who then obviously issues the passport. So a lot of libraries have, uh, been getting into this, um, because, uh, as I mentioned before, because first of all, as a public building and as a nonprofit, they qualify, and, uh, it wouldn't be too hard, doesn't look like, to train one person, probably me, uh, to, to perform this service, um, either by appointment or, um, whenever the library is open. So we're looking into that. It could be a great revenue source. Uh, the standard processing fee is twenty-five dollars that, uh, we receive for each application. Um, and there's also the service aspect. Uh, right now, if you want to apply for a passport, you have to drive to Fayetteville or possibly Farmington Post Offices. So we'd be the only place in Southern Washington County where you could go to apply for a passport. Um, and, uh, we are, uh, I don't know if, uh, how widespread the knowledge is, that the li- state libraries were cut. Budget was cut, uh, in the, in the last legislative session by a million dollars, one million dollars, uh, across the board. So that's gonna cut our funding by about sixty-five hundred dollars for 2016. So we are, uh, you know, trying to be creative and looking for new revenue sources, and this is one. But, uh, you know, just through some research, a lot of libraries are doing, and, uh, the other, the other thing that appeals to me is that it would bring in people to the library that don't necessarily normally go and visit the library, and so hopefully we will meet some new people and they'll make a good impression on them so that they will want to come back, so. Uh, it looks like a win-win, just, uh, will involve a commitment, uh, on our part, but I think we can do it. And, uh, second item is that we will have a part-time position opening, uh, very soon. Uh, Maria Pendergraff is leaving us. Uh, we kinda knew this was coming for a while. She's, uh, she's, she's been wanting to move to Little Rock to be closer to her daughter, um, and, uh, she's put her house on the market and already received an offer, so she promised me one month to, um, train me and whoever else comes, uh, who, who we, uh, can find, uh, to do her job. But anyway, she's, it's gonna be a big loss. She was the head librarian at Prairie Grove for, I think, about twenty-five years. Opened the children's library in Prairie Grove and, um, has, you know, kind of wisdom that you can't, uh, find anywhere, uh, through experience, so it's gonna be a loss, but, um, we kinda knew what was coming, and anyway, we certainly want to recognize her service to the library. John Bachman talked her out of retirement a few years ago, and, uh, she's made a huge contribution, even though she's a little bit behind the scenes, maybe not as public a figure as, as John or myself in the library, so. Uh, the job will be about, she currently works about fifteen hours a week. So we'll be, we'll be looking for somebody. We want to advertise that position, uh, so start, starting now. Uh, hopefully through the distribution of the minutes, and people here, you'll know that there is a position opening at the library, a part-time position. I think that's it. Uh, does anyone have any questions or?
John, will you make sure Marsha has that information about that position?
Yes.
Just email her, and she can get that on the city website as well.
Yeah, yeah, that reminds me, I need to write a job description. Hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have it done, the end of the day. And, uh, and then we'll get that, and then we'll be accepting applications for the position once we get the description written out, so. Thank you.
I have, hang on. You want to talk about the summer reading program?
Oh, okay, uh, right, uh, lots, starting, uh, next Monday and for the next six weeks, um, and less work, we'll have, uh, regular sort of, uh, reading program for, uh, younger kids. Uh, we have one program for kids, uh, in grades five and up, but if, uh, if you know of anyone, or if you're responsible for, uh, any kids, uh, preschool up to, uh, grades, grade four, I guess it would be about age four on up would be appropriate. Um, we have a great summer reading program planned. Uh, our children's librarian will be presenting programs and, uh, we'll have books available around the theme. The theme this year is, um, uh, every hero has a story, so it's about the, the theme of heroes, and, uh, so we'll have a lot of, you know, books and things supporting that, that idea and that theme. And, uh, it's, it's, it's gonna be quite good. I need to, uh, I sent out a flyer to the friends. I need to, if there's some way to get that on the city website, I don't know, or, we, we'll get it on our library website, I guess.
If you, if you go through Marsha on that again, she can get that posted on the city website.
Right, we hope, okay, good. We hope it's well attended, and there is one special program, uh, where we'll have sort of a guy, Leonardo, Guitar Hero, is gonna be, they expect, he's a special performer, he's a performer, you know, draws big crowds usually, so we'll, we'll really be promoting his performance in, uh, July. I can't remember the exact date, though. But it's every Monday at one o'clock, uh, starting this Monday, this upcoming Monday, for six weeks. It may, some of them may be in library hall, some in the library. I think, uh, this first week, we'll see what the attendance is. If it gets a little too large for the library, we'll move it over to the hall.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, Paulette, got anything for us?
Um, this is my record report, John.
Okay. All right, any questions for Paulette? Planning Commission. Secretary's not here. No report? All right, um, Police Department, um, I'll go ahead and mention a couple of things. He's got his main report here in our packet. Um, one thing, uh, Chief Watts has completed his required forty-hour refresher course, so he's now, uh, a police officer in Arkansas, so, um, so he went, uh, to a training academy for that. Then, um, we do have, uh, our part-time officer, Adam Brown, is now a full-time officer for our police department. And his, uh, start time, his start date is June sixteenth, so that's on there. And then just briefly, um, Chief Watts has put together, has been in the process of putting together a weapons training facility, which is out in McLitten Anchor. Uh, he is, already has a couple of dates out in the fall for, I think, pistol and rifle training. Uh, is bringing in some people from out of state, uh, to do that training, who have both police and military, uh, expertise in that. Uh, and so I think, I think we're gonna see more things going on out there in McLitten Anchor. Uh, we don't have that contract signed with them, but, uh, but it's in, in place, and they've been discussing this for a little over a month, so, uh, we'll have that to look forward to in the future. Public Works. We have, um, I'm gonna go ahead and cover this now. This will be, um, whole business on number one, but, uh, we offered, uh, we went through our process, uh, for securing somebody for that position within our interviews last week and this week, and, uh, the committee and myself, and that committee included Christie. Uh, unanimously asked, uh, we decided on one person. We asked James Scanlon if he would accept that position, and he's going to, so we, we gave him a letter of acceptance, uh, and he has signed that today. So we don't have a specific start date on that. He's, he's gonna talk with the chief and see how much time they need to have him continue on the police force, uh, and then, um, we'll have a start date on that. So, um, is there, is there any questions or comments from council on that new position? I, I would like, uh, a, a motion to accept this, uh, by the council, that has, has, has been done by the Water and Sewer Committee, uh, in this hiring process.
I make that motion.
Okay, Misty?
I second.
Okay, second by Bill. All right, any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed by like sign.
What did you decide the salary would be?
Uh, fifty-eight thousand.
Your appointment to make, so you're making the appointment.
Okay.
They sort of confirmed it just now, that you're.
All right.
With the, with the recommendation of the, uh.
Okay. Before we continue with that, with the recommendation of the committee, uh, I make the appointment for James Scanlon, uh, to be Public Works Director for the City of Westport.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a little high for a man with no experience in that field and, uh, four thousand more than the police chief started, department head. I just wonder, boy's not digging on that.
Okay, you, you want me to respond to that?
That's up to you.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Well, um, we had three people who we thought were gonna be qualified to, to that position, and we, we interviewed all three of them. James Scanlon, um, uh, has a bachelor's degree. He, uh, is working on his master's. He's had a lot of experience in industry. Uh, some of that working with wastewater, it's the chemical side of it, that he's had those experiences, uh, in, in the industry. He has overseen, uh, uh, departments, uh, which have multiple employees in those, um, twenty, thirty employees, uh, and has taken care of, of the management of, of those, um, uh, those jobs and, and with those companies. Uh, he has worked with ADEQ, uh, he's worked with EPA and other government agencies, so he has a working relationship, uh, with both state and federal, uh, environmental agencies. And, uh, he has voiced a strong, uh, desire to be a continuing part of this community. Uh, he thought that he could better serve Westport in a capacity that was much more challenging than being a patrol officer, and I think that, uh, you know, that spoke highly of, of his intentions of wanting to stay here and wanting to contribute to, uh, to this city. You know, with that and with the professional nature that he presented himself, um, our, our committee felt very strongly that, that he was the most qualified of, of applicants that we had. Bill?
Uh, have we established, uh, a maximum, uh, uh?
Top down?
Yeah, but for maximum pay for that position. Uh, and, you know, we, we didn't do that the last time, and we wound up with problems, uh, of, uh, possibly expense. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, some kind of a, uh, cap put on, um, or what that can, what that position pays, um, if we can do that.
Okay. We are, we are discussing that, that right now for not only that position, but for all the positions in Westport. I can't tell you that we're gonna have that in place, um, this year. We're gonna, we're gonna move in that direction. Uh, we'll have, uh, we'll bring all of the, uh, department heads together within the next couple of weeks and ask them to start considering, uh, those cap possibilities for their departments and how they would like to deal with that. And then in the budget process, it's really gonna start about in August. Um, then we'll, we'll discuss that more seriously and see if we can't find, uh, a solution to that. I don't think we're gonna have everything in place that we might want to with just this first attempt. Uh, this is probably gonna have to be changed over the next couple of years as we gain some, uh, some momentum in it and also, uh, get some experience in it, but we're kind of looking at, at other communities and what they're doing, uh, with this to get some ideas. But, uh, we are, we're looking at caps and, and ways to give promotion and to, uh, give raises for everybody across the board, not only department heads, but, uh, our people that work within the departments.
I, I hope that the council has some say in that at some point.
And we will.
Comes to the money situation.
Yeah, but, uh, in fact, uh, this, you'll, you'll be asked to come to the first meeting with the department heads, uh, and then, you know, any after that that we have, so, yeah, the council will be involved in that.
I'm, I'm a little concerned that, um, that may be kinda after the fact when you start somebody at, at fifty-eight thousand dollars. I think that's kinda high, uh, especially since we just hired a police chief with several years of experience, and we hired him at fifty-five. And, you know, if we don't get a grip on this, whether it's from the bottom side or the top side, we're gonna be right back where we were, if not worse.
Okay, well, that, that position was advertised at fifty-five to sixty-five thousand. So right now, that top end, according to what we advertised, was sixty-five. And the discussions that we had coming up to that, um, we had a couple of people on the committee who, uh, have experience in this area, uh, and have been around, uh, municipalities, water and sewer streets for a lot of years, and, um, they had even, uh, voiced higher salaries than that. So that final decision was mine, and I brought it down to fifty-five to sixty-five. We originally started higher than that. Uh, this position, uh, is probably the, the widest span of, of, uh, responsibility in the, in the city. We have water and sewer, we have a project going on, we've got a lot of infrastructure to deal with. We have streets, we're looking at building maintenance, um, you know, all the way down. Even right now, a dog catcher falls under that position. But, uh, it's, it's a lot of responsibility. Uh, gonna be, be dealing a lot with, uh, with bids, with, uh, elite aspects of everything that, uh, that that department comes under because of both state and federal regulations. So, uh, the responsibilities, that, that position probably has more responsibilities in it than any other position in our town. And, um, we, we wanted to get good applicants, and we did. And I think if we would've gone much lower than that, we might not have. If we look out to other communities, uh, many and most of those salaries are higher than that.
No, I, I don't question any of that. The only problem that I have is, is I've been thinking about this for some time, but the position seems to be getting less complicated than what it was, because we're not gonna have to test any water coming in. That's set by federal standard. And all the water going out, when the septic, when the sewer system is in, will take care of, they'll be testing, and we won't be testing. So I see a big relief there, that we're not gonna have to worry about.
Our infrastructure on sewer needs a lot to work. It's not just the sewer plant.
Oh, I'm not talking, I, but, but, okay.
Well, could, am I misunderstanding that, that we also gave Christie a raise because Christie has taken on some of the stuff that Butch did? And then that takes away some of the responsibilities of the new director?
Well, Christie has taken on more of the responsibilities, I think, of some of the daily activities, um, and part of that antecedent, and we, we voiced that. Um, but, um, you know, she's, she's now putting, uh, and she is, she's now putting together some reports, so we'll go back to that position.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not trying to question what Christie does. I'm just questioning whether or not that's taking some of the stuff off of what that new director is gonna be doing.
Well, I, I don't, uh, there may be some things that are taken away from him a little bit, but not a lot. And I think that, that we're, we're adding, we're also adding to that position, because now that position, um, is gonna require, uh, that person to look for additional resources of money and, uh, funding for other things that we need to do in Westport. Uh, we're running our budget pretty much at max every year, and there are compromises made every year on our budget negotiations among the departments. So we're kind of at a break-even point. And, and we have departments that are underfunded. Our police department is underfunded, our fire department is underfunded, and I think we can look at others as well. Uh, our library is now gonna be underfunded. So, um, so trying to find other resources of funds through grants or agencies is gonna be part of that, and, and that in itself is a fairly big job. Uh, and can certainly, if, if those, if it's successful, those, that can certainly justify some additional, uh, salary for that position. Anyone else? Parks? Chad didn't mention anything in particular in his report. Oh, yes. Uh, Robert, can, can you give us a little bit of an update on where we are, um, on our sewer line? Any additions that have come up?
We, we have two ongoing activities. Uh, Tim Plinger's still working with the Code for Resources Survey, uh, basically evaluating locations that they identified on the first, first base. Um, some of those were on the Fayetteville, Grayfield Airport property. Uh, he's made contact with the new airport manager there, who probably came as a surprise to him that this was ongoing. I don't know if, in the transition, he's only been there six or eight months, if he was advised of this or not. But they've made contact with those folks, and they've got access to the airport property. Uh, we're sending the airport manager, uh, the current plans for this, uh, sewer main across that property, around behind the, uh, green elementary screen. So there's quite a bit of pipe that, uh, is proposed on their property, and there's a few sites that, uh, they found historical artifacts that they need to evaluate further, so that's, that's ongoing. And then, uh, we've got three, uh, segments of sewer main that they were not able to TV with their, uh, big camera. Uh, they came back with a small camera, right during all the rains and everything was full, so we're asking them to come back again now that the flows are down. The city guys went out and checked, the flows are down, to see where they can run the small camera and keep, keep, uh, you know, that information together so that, uh, when we move forward with the sewer system, uh, repairs, we'll have the full, uh, set of information as opposed to having three set line segments still unresolved. So we're hoping that'll get done in the next few weeks, if we can have the full picture on that. That's basically the two activities that are ongoing there.
Do you want to cover two or three in old business now, when he's standing up there?
We can, okay. Um, on old business, item two, ANRC, Arkansas National Resource Commission, to release money for rehab work, beginning our wastewater infrastructure, including manholes rehab, pipe repair and replacement. That has, they have pushed that up a little bit for us.
Yes, sir.
Um, and they, uh, what, what happened there to allow them, what decision did they make on that?
Earl kinda twisted our arm a little bit. I think Mayor was, is part of the situation there. They recognized the need for the sewer repairs to be done, and, and when we met with them in Little Rock, the mayor went down and expressed the concern that, that the sewer repairs be done. So it's been a multi, uh, fasted, everybody's been beating on them to let us move ahead with that. Uh, they've done some soul searching, and we finally caught all of them in office long enough to make a decision to, uh, allow us to move, move forward on that, so. So, uh, basically, they're gonna let us go ahead on the sewer repairs, uh, as a separate, uh, funding package that can, can move forward and not wait on the Cofor Resources Survey to be completed and then the environmental evaluation that follows that and then the public hearings follow that and the ongoing, uh, EPA criteria that seems to concern years and years. So, we're hoping to move forward with that and get something done, uh, not in time to beat those floods we've been having, but maybe before the next major round comes, uh, depending on when they are.
All right, um, and then, um, on our item number three, the engineering agreement and procurement requirements, uh, this has been requested by ANRC. And essentially what it, what it is is that we are, uh, McClellan Engineering is gonna be our, um, our engineer of record and seeing us through the rest of the project. So, you have resolution, um, in front of you and Christie, that number is gonna be seven? Okay, so that number's gonna be oh-seven. And it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with McClellan Engineering for the consulting services for the sewer pipeline project related to sewer infrastructure work. And I, I don't think this is, uh, really the, the main way that, that they've done business over the years, but Tom, can you speak to, to why we're doing this?
Since they wrote the email saying they want us to make sure we adhere to this, this state law, which of course we do anyway, I know the mayor's evaluated your, you know, qualifications and of course, you're well-known to the city and this council. And the mayor, of course, evaluated other qualifications from other companies and we went ahead and made sure we fulfilled all those state laws. And I went ahead and reduced them to writing so that the NRC would see that the council was advised and how we hit all those high points in that state law. We don't typically do a resolution, but that way they'll see that instead of just trusting the mayor or a public works person to go through the procurement process, the council's gonna recognize that, so.
Right, I think historically, we had a contract with the commission that may or may not have been done under what they foresee as a procurement requirement, so clean slate, start over.
Right, I wanted to know that we took that very seriously and we complied with the procurement, that procurement state law.
Yes, sir.
So, that's what we're gonna, that way you'll have a resolution. When it comes time to do the contract again, they'll have a whole fulfillment.
I know you just got this in front of you, have you, have you all had time just to read through it? Is there any questions on this resolution?
Make a motion that we pass resolution twenty fifteen dash oh-seven.
Okay, Christie, is there a second? Dawn, second? Any discussion?
I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have we identified any major problem areas?
We have, uh, multiple manholes that are problem areas and then, uh, in some of the TV work, there were some specific leaks that have been identified, that some of them, you know, it always happens in the worst possible place, in the line or seventy-one. Uh, one of the stretches that they get TVs under the railroad track crossings, which could be equally the worst possible place, but with the vibration there, it's probably, you know, possible that you get pipe failures, so.
Right.
Uh, there has been areas identified, the mayor's got a book about this thing, that's got tables and tables of, uh, information in it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, the largest percentage of infiltration, they said, were manholes. I think, and we're looking right around eighty percent if my memory serves. But the cost of fixing those was gonna be about forty-five percent of the total cost for rehab. Does that sound about right from what I remember?
Something, you know, it ranges, uh, the, the majority of the repair work is manholes. The amount of water you get rid of versus the cost is, is a lot more cost effective to fix those than it is to do and replace sewer mains. So, in order to serve specific major, uh, issues with sewer mains, uh, the cost prohibits making minor repairs to the mains.
Anyone else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Pose by like sign. Thank you, Robert.
I think it's great the NRC is giving us money to fix it now, so we'll be sending less water to say that we need to have built. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's what Robert said, but.
It is, you know, sending rainwater is gonna cost us the same amount of treatment as sending sewage, so, um, reducing that is, is significant for us. Renewable Resource Center, the only thing I might mention on that is the Waste Management, uh, has opened up their, um, grant application for this year. And what we'll be looking at West Fork to ask for that is, um, if you did down there, Paul's Place, the large building down there, needs a concrete slab, so, uh, I've got the cost on it with an apron out front. Uh, we're looking at a little more electrical work done in that building because it's just a, the very basics, a few lights in there and that's it. And, um, uh, so, and then I've, I've asked Patty if, if there are some other things, okay, that we might add into that grant, uh, we'll include those as well on that grant, uh, we, I've got about, we've got about a month and a half to put it together, so we've got plenty of time to get in there. Fire Department? Okay, Mitch?
I have been real satisfied with the two guys that we've hired. Uh, they both do us a good job. Travis is good to do the training and Mark is real good, happy to know the maintenance on the stuff. But Travis has trained our firemen better than we've ever had firemen trained. And we have good accept, access to, uh, available training since we have their, uh, head man in their training is on our fire department, kinda helps. But anyway, he's built a, a demonstration in the old fire station there at the airport. That's a, a forcible entry thing and our guys have really taken to that. It's, it's good and that's something we really needed. But the main thing I need is we're hurting on the turnout gear. And we started out to get the grant, that failed. The city would've had to put up fifteen thousand on that in the rural. And the rural says that, uh, they'll go ahead and leave their fifteen in. And if the city would do that, that would let us get ten or twelve sets of turnout gear. And we are really hurting on turnout gear. And with that many, we could probably pick out the ones that are most likely to go in a place where they need the best gear. But our gear is real old. And to start with, the old gear has been washed so much, I'm not sure how fireproof it is. And, uh, the stuff is, is between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars a suit, so. That would let us get ten or twelve suits if both, uh, departments would leave the fifteen in. And the rural will have to, have to use some of their CD money to do that, but I think we need to do it. And I'd like the city to do that also.
Mitch, let, let me visit that just, just a second. We, some of the discussions that we, one of the discussions we had on that is the fire department does have reserve money.
Does what?
The fire department does have reserve money, uh, both in savings and in CDs.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, so, my, my request was on that if the fire department could pay that fifteen thousand of their part for this turnout gear out of one of those two funds, either out of the CD or out of the reserve money, the savings money that, that the fire department has.
That's what the rural's gonna have to do, so that's not, we could do that.
Okay.
But somehow, we're gonna need to go ahead and buy more in the future before too often. Because we have about, uh, thirty-seven or eight people. And, uh, the training now is a lot more, makes them a lot more aggressive, fighting house fire and stuff like that. And of course, our, our big deal is the highways and either one of them that way is, is, uh, some of the things that's happened on the highway and, and, uh, as long as we don't have one like that here. Where was it, up north somewhere, they wrecked a truck today and had, uh, twenty-two hundred pigs on it. We just don't want one like this.
No.
But we've had some about that bad a time or two. But anyway, whatever you do for me on that, I sure appreciate it because I'm really leery of guys using turnout gear to smell first class.
Christie, do we need a budget adjustment, um, out of the fire department for that fifteen thousand?
They have, between their uniform budget and their equipment budget right now, they have right at thirteen thousand. Um, so we could spend that and get the remain, that, the savings that they have is only a little over four thousand dollars. So, we could basically transfer that savings, um, into the general fund and, and apply that to their budget, um, to give them a little leeway as far as if they need anything else for the rest of the year. Um, so that's one way we can do it, or we can make a motion just to cash in one of their CDs and add that into their budget. Let me look and see what this, how much the CDs are, I don't even remember.
The interest rate on the CDs is almost nothing, isn't it?
Just about, not there anymore.
Yeah.
I just, I don't have a bound, I don't have in front of me how much each one is. They have a hundred and four thousand dollars in CDs, but off, off the top of my head, I don't know how much those are individually. I don't have it in front of me, so.
Do we need, uh, council action to do the four thousand savings over into the, okay? And then the rest will be covered because of the categories they're in? Mitch, is, is that all right if we do it that way? If we, if we pull the four thousand back into, the four thousand savings back into budget?
No, I'm not completely hearing you, Charlie.
Okay, you've got, uh, you've got thirteen thousand dollars in two accounts that, that are okay, we can cover that under equipment.
That's in my this year's budget.
Yes, and then, so, we're looking at two thousand more dollars. Can we pull that out of the savings account rather than cashing in the CD? Is that all right with you?
Well, the only, the problem that I have, when you use the money out of what I have in my budget, it's a bare minimum for what we needed it in there, not including turnout gear. I think we had just a little bit of turnout gear in there, is all. And, uh, I don't wanna buy turnout gear and then have something happen that we needed money right instantly and have to wait on a council meeting to get money to do something like that.
Okay, um, well, under, under emergency condition, we can spend money that is not approved. Like, didn't we do this before? And then at the next council meeting, amend the budget to handle that. And so, we can, we can visit that, we could visit that anytime. So, if that happens, Mitch, we can come back, um, and approve any monies that you would have to spend under emergency condition.
Okay, but now, right now, you're talking about using the money that's in the budget right now, our normal operating money.
Yes.
Plus, plus the four thousand that's in your savings.
I don't, I guess.
Do you just wanna, you want us to cash a CD in?
I want you to cash a CD in, that's to use fifteen thousand of it.
Okay.
You're in good shape on the CDs and the, the city needs to invest in some of this equipment more than they have been in the past because the rural owns a lot more of the equipment than the city does because of the city's always been not wanting to do something like that. And, well, like the turnout gear we have right now, I think ninety percent of it is rural because the, uh, city didn't want a paper in it when we bought that.
All right, well, we can, yeah.
Air packs and everything like that. And a lot of that stuff is getting old, air packs, they're changing to where you have to buy new ones every so often. And the part, they have a bunch of junk parts on them that we don't even need, but you, that's the way you have to buy them. And that's the first thing that tears us up, is that stuff. Some of our newer ones right now are in worse shape than some that are old. So, I don't know.
All right.
Figure it out, watch your calendar.
Okay, uh, cashing in the CD, we need council approval for that and put it in the budget item. All right, and that would come under equipment.
But can we look at the pros and cons of that? Because I kinda like the id, the first idea a whole lot better. I mean, I don't like to just start cashing in CDs. And unless he can show a lot of otherwise, what he was gonna use that money for, I mean, we're already six months into a year.
Yes, and so, and we've got six months left. He's at, well, you know, he's asking to keep that in case there are expenses that come up between now and January.
You're gonna, you'll be penalized if you cash it in if it's not insured.
They usually waive that for us, but we don't have a guarantee of that before I talk to them.
I don't see the difference. If he needs the money, at some point, he's gonna get it out of one or the other. I think it should just, can't do what you need to do the easiest way. And if you don't have to use the CDs, you're gonna be better off because you'll still have them. If you need them, they're there to cash in.
How long has it been since we cashed one in? See, I haven't been able to.
I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to move the four thousand dollars out.
I don't think I've ever paid anything cashing in a CD or using that part of it and leaving part of it in there.
I'll entertain a motion to cash, to, uh, to move the four thousand dollars out of savings into budget.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, any, any more discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All right, pose by like sign. Mitch, we're gonna move four thousand out of savings into the budget, uh, into equipment. And then if we need additional money the rest of the year, we can go back to the CD and cash in at that time and put that back in your budget. Okay, Christie, what do we have on?
I don't have anything else. If you have any questions, welcome to answer.
All right, are there any questions on finance, committee? Okay, old business, uh, we're down to item four. Council meeting recordings, how long do we wanna keep council recordings? All right, just a little FYI for the council. It came into question that, uh, the council, uh, or the city was going to destroy all of its past records. And so, Christie has had, uh, the pleasure of spending several hours making copies of all of the minutes that were recorded of all of the past years, uh, for a FOIA request. That was never gonna happen. We were never gonna go in and destroy past records. Just wasn't gonna happen. But we always honor FOIA requests, so, um, that said, do you all wanna put a limit on the time that we keep recordings from city council minutes? Right now, our city clerk uses those to help, uh, with accurate records on the minutes. And so, I think that's important for the city clerk to have access to that. And then past that, um, you know, I don't know, um, what other official use that that may require. Tom, you've spoken to this a couple of times, you wanna, you wanna make any remarks on the recordings and teaching those?
Yes, sir, I think that it's good to know what you're gonna do instead of just do whatever we've always done. I think you need to make a decision. There is. There is no law that requires you to keep recordings or videotape or anything like that. There's a law regarding minutes, of course. What a lot of cities do, and what is very easy to do, is record the council meetings so that the person who's doing the minutes will have some assistance in doing that. Then after the minutes are approved, the next meeting, they can, what I would say in the old days, flip the tape over and just use another side, they flip it back over, flip it back over. So there's really no maintenance of that recording. It's not ever kept as a record. These days, you would just probably delete the file, you know, after you've gotten the minutes approved. And that way, you're not worried about the program. If you wanna keep them, then decide how long you wanna keep them and sort of in what format you wanna keep them. Again, easy thing to do is just, after the minutes are approved, you don't have to keep that recording. And in fact, ask your recorder, you know, not to. But, um, if you wanna keep them, that's fine too. There is no, as far as liability and lawsuits and such. Boy, if you looked really good, you wish you had them. And if you didn't look good, you really hope you don't have them. So at this point, it matters. This is up to y'all, but I think that letting the public know what you have and how long you're gonna keep it is the best idea.
Do you have any input as to what's kinda typical in Northwest Arkansas in here?
Well, I wish I could say that it's typical, that everybody has a really straightforward policy. But in fact, what's more typical, when I go to a city, um, for a project, you, you, you find it's all over the map. You know, with whoever's doing it at that point and what they do, what the current recorder's doing. What I recommend is, again, just using that recording to aid in producing the minutes. That's what the state law requires minutes, that's what you need to keep. And keep those minutes. So I'd use that recording to aid in producing the minutes, make sure the council's a chance to review the minutes so that they're approved the next meeting and then you don't need to keep that recording anymore. I would ask your, your treasurer not to keep it beyond that. For your recorder, right?
Counsel?
That sounds good to me.
Come up, come up?
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that one.
Any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Posed by like sign? Motion carries. All right, new business? The Little Opry has changed hands, uh, it has been sold to the Opry Nonprofit Group. And, um, they had a pretty large benefactor to help support that. And I, I was contacted, um, about two weeks ago to ask that the city council, uh, and nothing specific, but that we as a city help support the Little Opry. The discussion was that, you know, that it's great family entertainment, they're here every week, uh, never miss a beat. And, um, that, uh, you know, the building is right here downtown. It is a showplace for people that come in from not only our community, but surrounding communities in Oklahoma and Missouri, so. And they usually have a pretty good crowd at night. So, um, I, you know, I, I think that's a good idea. I think it, it really does look like a, a local, uh, entertainment place. I don't know what their plans are as far as expanding that at all. Last year, we used it at, uh, West West for, um, a beauty contest. So, and it served, served us well there.
But there's no specific thing that they've mentioned that they buy for the views?
No, um, and I.
Not working obligated to?
No, they're not asking for any kind of obligation, they're just, you know, just saying, you know, this is a good thing for West Fork. I, I think if, if we would recognize that and then as opportunity arises, help with the promotion of that. You know, we have more things going on our website, we can certainly add that to businesses and, and other activities that go on our website. I mean, that's an easy thing to do. You know, occasionally, I put a lot of things on the marquee. We can certainly, you know, when there's an empty side or both sides are empty, I can certainly put a message up there. Those are small things that we could begin there and then if further opportunities come up or if they approach us again. But I think the idea tonight is, you know, y'all think this is a good idea? I think, uh, you would support, you know, we're not offering anything financial for this promotion. But just, just kind of an open support. Anybody got any thoughts on that, or?
That was not being financial, I don't, the timing's not very good.
No, no, and we're not, we're not gonna do that. And I don't know that we, we can do, we can't support them.
That was my concern, we have library that can just bring me that, we'd come waiting for that, for me personally.
Yeah, yeah, we really can't. I don't think legally we can put any money into, do any kind of promotion for it.
As far as utilizing the city website and.
Charlie, could I mention something on that?
Yes, sir.
If they started out to use upstairs, that will be a bucket of worms to fire. Our escape is built on the, on the saddle there is wood. And, uh, I'd be afraid for the dog to go up that now. It should be taken down and then that leaves just this stairway on the back and that won't be any kind of fire inspection.
Okay.
That thing needs to be metal and so it would, but it worked right at that time and they didn't use it anymore. But I think upstairs of that thing is what was done, so it is a fire hazard.
Okay. Well, hopefully, if they choose to do an expansion there, we'll at least know about it so we can, we can address it then. All right, well, I'll just, if, if the opportunity comes up for us to do some things with our cost, then I'll just do that for the Little Opry. All right, um, one and a half cent sales tax. This is, the introduction to this, totally for consideration by the city council. And, um, we've got budget coming up soon, so we're gonna have some of this kinda weigh into some decisions there maybe. Just to begin with, if, if we would pursue a sales tax of any kind right now and, and we did it as quickly as we could, we're not, you know, we're looking at a year from now for any of that to be available for us. Like, it takes about a year when you look at the election having to come up and, and doing the ordinances and the public meetings and so on. And so, so it's not a, it's not a quick thing to do. But, uh, the idea behind the one and a half cent sales tax is to, um, take a half cent of that in support of police and fire. And they, um, they are short, they have been for a long time. A lot of times, they struggle just, just to be equipped, uh, to maintain vehicles. And to, uh, you know, to make sure that they, they have the personnel to do the jobs that they need to. And, you know, there's, there's, there's not any other sources besides our sales tax and our regular budget. There's not for any of the departments, it's true across the board. But that, if, if, so I, I would like to start that part of the discussion that, that that half cent would not have a sunset clause. That would be a support with those two departments continually. Then the other one cent, which has come up before, would be divided among departments in the city depending on needs. One of the first things we have right here is, uh, we, we've been talking for a little over a year about an addition to the library. And it needs, the building needs some major work. We need to get the stacks out of the old part of the building. And they do need some expansion, they need some more computers, it just, it just needs more room. And they're maintaining, I think, to pull people through there, so it's used a lot. They're using, they're doing programs with schools and with children, so there's, there's a lot of activity there. Then, um, we have, uh, we have considerations for infrastructure repair. We're, we're looking at the funding that we probably have available, at least in the near future, for the sewer, but we have similar major problems with our water system. And there hasn't been much maintenance or upkeep yet. So we're gonna be looking at some pretty strong funding there to, to work on it. Our water system is gonna be evaluated in the next few weeks. Rural Water Association is gonna help us do that. So we'll be able to identify some of the major problems we have with the water system. You know, we, we always seem to struggle when vehicles come up and how we're gonna do that. So, you know, it could be used for vehicles, for, for departments. Maintenance on buildings, we've fallen behind on it. You know, all of our facilities need something. Some of them kind of major, some of them are still in okay shape, but they still need attention before they become in bad shape. And, um, you know, the economic development part of it is gonna be a slow process as well. We're, you know, with, with whatever efforts we put forward for that, it's, that will also be a slow process. We're not gonna have a large in, uh, increase in sales tax of a short period of time. So this, uh, this is not really a Band-Aid. This is, this is something I think that could really help, uh, the city in lots of respects. We have, uh, I, I think probably maybe all of one of our departments, or two of our departments are pretty well staffed. But, you know, we could use another police officer. Occasionally, it comes up that we, uh, we really need twenty-four hour coverage. I think businesses might in some respect, you know, expect some of that and also businesses coming in. So there's just a lot on the table there that I think would justify us looking at this seriously. And, uh, so that's what I would like for the council to do. We can begin some discussions tonight, or we can have, uh, a, a workshop sometime over the next few weeks to get together and, and look at this more closely. Or you can say no.
What do you expect, expect a cent and a half to bring in?
Um, a cent right now is bringing in right at two hundred thousand, a little more than that maybe.
I think, you know, the, the library is in dire straits and now their funding has been cut back across the whole state. So, I mean, I know that we've worked on the angles grants and all that and it's kind of not worked out. But the library, we need to address that somehow. Because it gets, I mean, I know there's kids that go down there after school and wait for their parents to pick them up. I know that's kinda the baby hangout down there, reefer books, and it also gives them somebody to go after school, so it would be nice if.
I know, we need, I know we need money, and I know that there are departments that are very short. But if we do this, we're looking at probably one of the highest rates in Northern Ar, Northwest Arkansas and maybe the state.
One or two.
But it's well over eleven percent. That's pretty tough. You know, we've just increased water, I'm just throwing out my thoughts, we've increased. I mean, the thing, the good thing about it is if we do it, ultimately, the boarders will decide on it. But I just think that that's, you know, we've asked them to raise water, water rates three times, or will be three times. Now we're gonna be at a cent and a half here and it begins to be a lot of money for people.
At a time when people don't have a lot of money.
Just my thoughts. You know, I mean, no problem, if the people decide on it, because that's where it all begins.
Yeah, sure.
And we recently did something with the school on the village or something that was on the property taxes.
Yes. That was a year ago. And it, and I, I put it at a cent and a half, looking at the half cent for fire employees. And, you know, it doesn't have to be there. I think one thing we need to consider if we're gonna do this is probably gonna be a one-time shot. So do we, um, should we set a workshop? Get some more information in?
I'd like to see the workshop and let's put some together some, or we got some numbers to look at. And, uh, make a educated stab at this rather than throwing money. And the other thing I would like to express is, um, I have a real problem with pouring any more money into the old library building. I think, uh, if we're gonna do something like this, we need to build a new building. And, uh, it'd scare people to death to know how much money's actually in that building that's down there. I was on city council when we bought the building and then, um, went through two renovations on it that cost a lot of money. And, uh, actually, I think your department paid for most of it.
It's always easy to look back, and we don't really have anything to show for all that. We should've done that in the first place.
Yeah, yeah.
And we wouldn't be in this position.
One remodel was over a hundred thousand. And, uh, another was additions and stuff was, it was thirty-five, forty thousand. That's a lot of money in that little building and it still has bad deficiencies. And, um, rather than, um, throwing more money at it, I would like to see a concerted effort put together to, um, everybody working together to get us a, a new, you know, commercial building, metal building or whatever and, uh, put it out there next to it. And use it to keep the old record tent or something, you know. But I, I think we need to, to look at a new building rather than pouring more money on that one.
All right, well, I'll set, uh, I'll set a date for a workshop. And, um, we'll have, we'll put Sid and Eve in to look at that, we'll gather information on it. So, uh, put your thoughts on paper too, if you would, and if there's anything that you want. You know, you can, you can send, you can send questions and ideas to, uh, to, to myself or to Christie. And then we can get those out for everybody to look at before we have that workshop. All right. A budget adjustment, uh, item number three, uh, seven thousand dollars from streets to police. And, uh, what the, the police department has, has spent past their, uh, equipment budget. And so, uh, some of the things that have come up is, um, we've had, we had, I think, one stop that, uh, the officer needed a kit to test for marijuana or cocaine or crack. One of the two didn't have that with him. And so, got to looking at all the vehicles, none of them had any of those kits. So, you know, those are, that, that seems like a minor thing, but when you're out of patrol and you're, you're making stops and that comes up, you know, a car needs to have in it, uh, the necessary equipment to, uh, to take care of, of stock. I, I think one of the things that they just did along those lines is they put in, uh, compression bandages and tourniquets in all the cars if that were needed at an accident. And so, you know, for the next six months, um, part, let's see, Christie, this will go, part of this will go to... All right, right now, um, under, and I think I, I think I put that sheet in front of you. Do you guys have a statement of, of revenue and expenditures?
This is emailed to you guys, I don't know if you have a copy of it. They're emailing to you.
And the resolution was emailed, both of them were, was that? Well, under equipment, uh, right now, there are thirty-two hundred dollars, uh, in the red. And so, of that seven thousand, thirty-three of that would just bring that equipment, uh, back up. And then, um... And then, um, and then supply, a supply item was added to that for thirty-seven hundred dollars. So, really what that seven thousand would do is, is bring their budget back into the black, break even. And then allow them thirty-seven hundred dollars for some more expenditures throughout the rest of the year. Which would include small items like, for example, like the, the drug test.
Charlie, I'd like to clarify that that, it's not street money, so we're not taking restricted funds or anything out of that, out of the Street Department to give to the Police Department. This is sales tax money that we had allocated in the budget to give the Street Department. That with looking at their budget, we can see that they're gonna have an abundance because they're, they haven't used a lot of what was budgeted for them. So, we, we strictly would be taking a sales tax allotment that we had given the Street, reducing that by seven thousand dollars and giving that to the Police Department instead. So, it's not restricted funds that we're transferring from the Street to the general fund.
All right, so, and there's a resolution, uh, for that. Whereas the City of West Fork has properly adopted a budget for the fiscal year of two thousand fifteen. And whereas it has declared that the City of West Fork has been forced by circumstances to make certain additional expenditures of funds over and above the budgeted amounts. The following line item items will be adjusted. Street Department's sales tax revenue will be reduced by seven thousand dollars. And the Police Department's sales tax revenue will be increased by seven thousand dollars to be used for additional equipment and supplies required by the department. Uh, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of West Fork. If these line item adjustments will be adopted, ratified and made part of the budget for two thousand fifteen. So, I would entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
To approve that resolution.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kira. Is there any discussion? Okay, all the favors say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign? Okay, item four, um, we're back to vehicles. The current vehicle that we have that was used, uh, by the Water, Sewer and Streets Department, um, has been around the block. I think the police had it first, Butch has used it. It's, it's, it works in town, but it's not a vehicle that would go on a road trip anywhere. Not even to Little Rock or probably to Fort Smith. I think the furthest that vehicle drives is to, uh, to Cleveland. Uh, I, I think, I think it goes to, I think it's gone to Springville a few times for regional planes. Uh, but it's, it, it's just not something that we can count on as transportation. And, uh, so, um, um, I'm asking that the council consider, uh, us looking at state bid to purchase another vehicle that will be used in the Streets Department. I'm looking at a pickup truck. Uh, I think it would be a more versatile vehicle. As time goes on, that could also go either into Police Department or go into a, a new, a city truck if something else were purchased. And something had to go out of, uh, out of, uh, service. So, it would, it would serve, it would serve, I think, for a longer period of time if we, if we purchased a pickup truck rather than like an SUV. And, you know, we're prob- right now, I think we're looking in the neighborhood of, uh, of a pickup truck, short bed with a, with a crew cab. That's just a little extended cab, not a, not a, not a crew cab, but extended cab. So, that's a smaller area behind it. For right around, uh, twenty thousand plus or minus in there, so plus. I, I, you got some of that information today offline and I talked with, uh, I talked with the gentleman at the, uh, State Arkansas Vehicle Contract Department. One vehicle that they have on there that is a pickup truck, um, with the extended cab, short bed, uh, is on there at twenty thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. And they, there's no Chivvies, there's no Fords, um, and this is Atlantus. And that, that is a four by four. So, again, there, if we need winter stuff, if we need off-road stuff, we would have that vehicle, uh, to use. And there has been a couple of times in the past that we've asked the police, the, the patrolmen, if they have four-wheel drive and we're having bad winter weather come in, to leave those vehicles here at City Hall. So that any officer who came in would have a four-wheel drive vehicle to use during the bad weather times. So, uh, I think we have two in the Police Department. We have three of the, then we don't have, we don't have another one out and that's it, so.
What, what does that truck is a?
That's a Dodge. It's a fifteen hun- it's a Dodge Ram fifteen hundred.
Dodge, that's like me.
Dodge, yeah. And we're looking into the fall before the next state bid comes out. And if, you don't know what, whether there's gonna be Fords or Chivvies or Mercedes or whatever.
What are we gonna do with the old vehicle?
We'll put it up for, uh, bid. We'll put it out on bid.
Give it away.
And we've done that before. I think over the past maybe two years, we've done that with two vehicles.
That Nelson knows the best way to get rid of them.
Yeah, yeah. That, that one had about eighty or ninety thousand and had the engine and transmission replaced. And then Butch took it and he's done a number of things to the, it, it's gone.
It doesn't even have a door handle on the driver's side. You have to leave the window right down to get in the vehicle.
Well, it's just served a purpose, two, two departments. Where would we get this money?
I get that, but how come we didn't have it in the budget to get another vehicle that was getting that bad and we knew it was that bad?
Well, in, in, when that budget was made, uh, road trips and that I'm, that I'm aware of. Anytime that Butch had to travel out of town, he took his own vehicle and the, the agencies that he traveled for paid his mileage. So, he took his, he took a private vehicle.
I think there was, that was, in that budget time would have been when Water Department was separate of the city.
It was.
And I asked Butch a number of times or talked with him about getting a new vehicle and he didn't wanna do that with the climate of the city and so forth. And I know that was one of the reasons that we never, that he never asked for a new vehicle, so. If that helps.
I mean, do we pursue a lot of road trips between like now and January with the new public board structure?
Well, there, I'm, I don't know. I'm gonna guess, uh, I haven't, I haven't been involved in that much in that side of it. But, um, I, I, you know, I think he could probably make a trip a month or two trips a month. Um, and part of that will depend upon if the new director takes, takes on some of the same kinds of activities that we had before with the agencies. Rural Water Association, we've been on their board. Some of the things with ADEQ, uh, usually when they have a meeting or even if it's just with a single entity, a single city, we travel to Little Rock, they don't travel to here. And we've done, we've done that three times already since I've been here, just, just with ADEQ.
Where would we probably try to get this money from?
All right, this would come half out of Streets and half out of Water and Sewer. And because it's, it's, the job is split mainly between those two. Uh, and that's gonna be, uh, you know, half and half. Christie, can you explain a little bit on Streets is sidewalk funds? Is that right?
I'm sorry, what, um, I don't understand.
The part that comes out of Streets?
Um, we, there was, before we took the seven thousand, um, away from the Streets just now to give to the Police, there was, um, about twenty-seven thousand dollars that I could basically shave off of many different line items without even touching this paving line item, which is at forty-five thousand that we haven't touched yet this year. Um, so the, the Streets kinda has an abundance right now. Um, and a lot of that's just, I mean, Butch did that budget, so I can't speak for why that budget was where it is or why we just haven't spent money that was budgeted or whatever. But it's, it's got an abundance of money in those line items right now. So, there, there was twenty thousand that I could easily find without touching the paving and sidewalks line item at all. Um, and then the Water Department for their ten thousand, we'll have to take it out of their, um, savings. And I say that I haven't looked at their line items real close to see if there's some line items we can shave on. But, uh, I think there's over, over fifty thousand in the water savings right now. Um, but I think it's important for those two departments to share that vehicle because that's, that employee does both equally, works for both of those departments.
Sounds like that budget was padded a little bit.
Mine's gonna go down.
I'll make a motion to purchase the vehicle.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All the favors say yes?
Yes.
Opposed by like sign? Okay, tonight's money night, sorry. All right, number five, maintenance of city administration building. What we have going on in this building right now is we have, um, we have water infiltration coming in and even coming, we had, we had water in this room coming down this wall, this last set of reins we had. We've got stucco that's above the grid area that has released from the brick that we're gonna have to get out of there. And that's a cause of moisture infiltration, uh, getting behind that stucco. We have brick deterioration on the outside of this wall on the north. That, um, is, uh, affecting the mortar. And, uh, we, we have some brick faces popping off during the winter when there's freezing. That water gets in the brick, pops the faces off. So, um, we need ru- we need repairs on this roof, which is, there, there's a, there's a wall that extends above the roof top. And so, a lot of that infiltration that has been causing water coming in, uh, this building and the damage to the brick on the outside is going underneath the cap on that extended wall, it's called a parapet. Water coming in the top of that cap and going down between the brick and then it just filters out, uh, into the brick. And then, in this case, it came all the way inside and down the wall. So, that flashing is gonna have to be replaced and resealed. And then, uh, the other part of that is this roof, uh, that we have brought up here above us slopes back into the main roof of the building. And it should never have been put on that way, but it was. So, all of the rain that comes off of the police station or off of this part of the building, uh, goes back into a small area and then comes out on grain on the side. Uh, there are, there are some holes in that metal up there already. Uh, and once that starts, it's gonna continue to go through. So, at some point, probably in the near future, there's gonna be water that's gonna get down through that roof and then into this building. Um, we've got an air conditioner on top of here, uh, that, uh, we continually go up and, and, uh, repair leaks around it, so we're gonna pull that air conditioner off of the roof and put it with the rest of our units out in the parking lot here. And get it off of there. So, what we have, what we're looking at is the roof, to put a new roof above us here to get the water drain off towards and into the parking lot area. And get it from draining onto the existing roof, which it is now. Um, and to, uh, um, and to put the flashing over the parapet all the way around to seal that off. And to, uh, to blast the brick, get rid of deteriorated mortar and re-strike all those joints and put a sealer on it. Uh, we're looking at, for the roof part of it, sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and for the brick, four thousand, five hundred dollars. And so, those two together bring us to, uh, twenty-one thousand, one twenty-two. So, this, this is gonna have to be, um, a budget adjustment. Christie?
Uh, we, we need to do that in two jobs. You need to do your roof as one job.
Yes.
And your brick as another job, um, because you're over the state bid limit with your twenty-one thousand. So, yes, we can do a budget adjustment, but let's do two different motions. Um, and don't enter into one contract for all that work at one time.
Right, okay. That makes sense.
I think I, I agree and the council should consider that as two different. And decide which one they wanna do as a higher priority right now, in case you can't do both. And then vote on that one and then vote on the next one that you think is a lower priority. And then instruct the mayor to work with the contractor on those two projects.
The water infiltration is the biggest problem. And, and that's, that's what we're looking at on the sixteen thousand, six twenty-two.
The last time we had worked in on this was what, maybe three years ago?
No, it's been longer than that. Um, it's been, oh, probably over five years ago. And they put a whole new layer across the roof. But we were told at that time that wouldn't solve all the problems, that the pitch wasn't a big part of the problem, that, that, from where the Police Department meets this building. Um, that that pitch was a big problem and all that, so. We, we fixed a large part of the issue with the layer that they put on there. And I don't, that's a special coating. I'm not exactly sure what it was that we did. It was eighteen thousand dollars. That fixed the, the majority of our leaks, but it, it was a Band-Aid for, for a part of it. It didn't completely fix all the problems.
Our main roof out here, the metal on the main roof out here, that covering there, we're okay on. It's this part up here. And if you get up there and look at it, this roof bellies out in the middle. Plus, it flows on to the existing roof here.
Charlie, this roof like this is like that old garage was over there. That stem wall sticks up there. That roof runs out there like that and that's tar paper. Somebody walks up to the exit, look over the side, they walk through the roof.
Yeah.
And I think that you're talking about back here has been added on is the reason it slopes that way. I think there was an alley within there.
There was.
There was.
Yeah, there was an alley right there.
Remember that?
Yeah.
But if anybody gets up on these roofs, kids crawl up or anything, you're fixing leaks. Because, and I don't know how you would change that, uh, because that's just tar paper and then tarred over the whole mess. And it probably runs up almost to the top of that and then just comes down like that. And then the water's got to run on that part of that that doesn't have any support. It's not a very good idea.
No, and, and that's one of the things that, that they're gonna fix on this. They're gonna run metal up the side and then they're gonna counterflash that from the top coming down over that metal. So, it's similar to what they would do around a, a fireplace, a chimney. So, it's a flashing and then a counterflashing and then they're sealing that with sealers as well. So, that bond goes together. So, it, it'll be a good job and, uh, when we talked about it, I told him that we were interested in something that would last twenty years, twenty-five years rather than five or ten years. And I, that's what we're gonna get. If we, if we go, if we go with this bid here, that's what we're gonna get. We're gonna get a long-lasting repair to this roof structure.
How long will it last?
We talked twenty to twenty-five years without making, without any major, anything happening. He'll come back, he'll come back within the first year, go up, look at everything, see what the heat and the cold. see what the heat and the cold has affected the sealer joints that, that are sealing those, those metal sheets together, and then repair those, to see what happens with, with that kind of, this is summertime, you get a tremendous amount of heat, over time, cold matures, so things will move, caulkings, even the best, will split some. But, you know, those kinds of repairs and turnbacks, we won't pay for, he will come and do. Stand behind his work.
What kind of warranty you got?
What kind of warranty? Uh...
I think I'm gonna have to go back.
But when he did the, one that's up there, it was five years, I don't know if that's still...
Oh, he did that?
He did the, he did the layer here, yeah, the new layer. And it was a five-year warranty, but I don't, I don't know if that's the same as...
One of the big things that needs done is take the flagpole off the roof, it's a huge worry, it's always good for anybody to be up there.
They're gone, they're gone. We took them off today. We took them off today. Yeah, our city crew does not like to get up there.
Wow. So you have to get up there.
Jeff, it will be that, or better, I, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have, I'd have to call and give you, give you a favor on that. But he has done very well to stand behind what he did for us before. Do you have an expectation on that?
No, five years sounds pretty good to me, I'm just kinda curious as to, you know, what kind of warranty we have.
So should we table it until we find that information out, or?
No.
Is that what you're...
I mean, something like that's kinda hard to, there's a lot of variables that can change and stuff, and as far as the warranty goes, as far as what happens to the new
Yeah.
discover, and for what period of time.
Yes.
Very hard to hold to, in fact.
That's it.
And that type of stuff, it really is. But I mean, you know, it is what it is.
He's a local guy, he's here, so we know where he lives. But you, do you want, do you want to table this, do you want to pass it with, with attachment that we're expecting a certain period of warranty with this? I, I can't imagine that he would do anything less than five years, for what he did up here, yeah. And, um, um... So...
Are you gonna call him?
Am I gonna call him?
You wanna call him?
Right now?
I'll tell you later.
How about you, local?
I'll wait for that kind of thing. You want me to?
Council recesses, while the mayor misses the call.
Can we do that?
Yeah. Council recess, right, mayor?
Council recessed.
Yay!
I'm gonna call him.
Recession.
Yes, it's recess now.
He doesn't remember what that was.
He's ever recessed?
Recession's when we all change the bubble gum between each other.
Oh my gosh, yes, well, we're not doing that.
Think your bubble gum was stuck in your hair.
So did we win or lose? I'm forgetting that the score was fifteen to three.
I don't know, my mom said the one that said Katie's on fire.
She's on fire.
Well, my husband said pit play well, and I'm thinking, maybe we're the fifteen then? If we've gotten that response.
What did I say?
Most of the time people say, I don't know.
No.
Hey Jeff, this is Charlie Rosetti. I'm in the middle of a council meeting, and my council people wanna know what your warranty time period is. On, on the roof ref-, yes, on the roof repairs. Okay, so can I, I can say, can I say five years on material? Installation, and then life of the, and then life of the material? Okay. Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you Jeff, okay. All right, five years on installation, and then life of material, and you said that's usually with galvanized, we're looking at twenty years. Did we lose anybody? All right, we read adjourned? We weren't adjourned, we were...
We're un-recessed.
You're recessed.
We're un-recessed.
Back to class now.
I'm a school teacher, I should know about recess. All right, so, five years on installation, twenty years on materials. So, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion.
Yes, Steve? Is there a second?
A second, yes.
Don second, is there any more discussion?
This is for the roof?
This is for the parapet, the sixteen thousand, whatever it is. Yeah, and, yeah, and redoing the roof, surface on this up here.
The, where's this money coming out of that?
General fund reserves.
General fund reserves, okay.
All right, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed by like sign. Okay, and then, the brick repair, which is removing the mortar, re-striking all of that, and putting a sealer on it that is tinted to the same color as our paint, so it won't stand out. At some point, we're gonna have to repaint the building, so, said he could attempt to seal it to match, fairly close. All right, then that's forty-five hundred dollars. So, again, I'm open for a motion?
I'd make the motion.
A second? Kara, any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign. Before we adjourn, let, let me, let me ask this of the council. I understand the questions about the salary on the new position, and I understand the concerns on that. Have, have I not given you guys enough information prior to, prior to, in this case, prior to the application process and the interviews, that you would have known what these costs were? And if I'm not giving you guys enough information, I need to, I need to know that, cause I, I don't, I don't wanna come into meetings without you guys being prepared, I, I absolutely don't want that. It's not fair to you, it's not fair to this town. And I really need, I, I really need for you guys to be informed, so that I know what you want, you're representing the town and you're representing the money of this town, that's, that's your job, and I absolutely respect that.
Well, one thing, he has never done this job whatsoever, and he's hired a higher scale than the very bottom, you know, it was fifty-five to sixty-five, what brought it up to fifty-eight? Because he, he has not done this job.
No, but he's done elements of it, that, that required some, some years in those positions. His, his job experience with handling crews, he's, he's even been in, in industries where there was, where there was union workers and company administrators, which is not an easy thing to manage. And so, there's an experience with managing people that, that takes years of experience to do. He has worked with water purification and with wastewater, not on the sewage side, but on chemical side, so there's a lot of transfer and translation there that goes into it. Probably the one thing in his job that he doesn't know much about is asphalt deconstruc- but most of what we do, I mean, you know, that's something that can be learned, we have people in place that really, over the years, have, they've been the ones doing that in the field, and without supervision, but he, he, you know, he would definitely become a part of that. He is excellent with budgets, he has done every job, basically, that he's had in industry, he's had a budget that he's had to put together and implement, so that's a big part of, um... Well, there's three kind of strong things that he has.
The only problem I had with it is, I don't think you didn't, I don't think that we probably were concise enough on our, what we wanted in, in the form of pay. We gave you a ten thousand dollar. You could go from fifty-five to sixty-five, and probably, I, looking back, that, that's probably an error on our part, I think we need to bring, be more concise on what we are looking for. But, I don't have a problem with it, mayor, except, you know, I'm looking here, under old business, which was, the positions closed, the committee's reviewing applications and interviewing possible candidates, and then the next thing is that we're, we've offered and a man's accepted the job. I don't, I wish there was a step in there that we could know these things. Because if, and the attorneys made it very clear, that you're doing what you're allowed to do, and the only thing we could do, if we wanted to, is come back and say, no, we're only gonna pay him this much. And that becomes a real, that's not a good situation when we have to, if we tell a guy he's gonna make fifty-five after you've hired him at fifty-eight, let's say. So I wish there was some step in there that we could do, that we might agree on this before the man is officially offered a position, whoever, in whatever position, that's only what I have.
Yeah.
You know, I, I like James, and I think there might be a few more things going on that he might present later with what he might do, and I think he's probably gonna do a good job at that.
Yeah, I'm not questioning James or questioning the committee, because that's, I didn't, I didn't wanna have anything to do with that, I want the committee to do it and make a recommendation, and I'm all for that, but I'm, I'm kinda like Mike, I, I, I think there, somehow there needs to be another step in there where, you know, you come to us and say, this is what, you know, I wanna offer him.
It, it just doesn't give us a place to say that we don't, we, we don't agree with you and make somebody not look very good, I don't, I wouldn't wanna do that to a candidate, first of all, he's accepted the job, and then you tell him, made a mistake, three thousand less, or something, you know? And if we could have some step in there, just to say, this is what I'd like to offer him, he's accepted, depending upon what you agree on salary, if, and we may not have another one of these now, for some time, hopefully we won't.
Hopefully, hopefully we won't.
I hope not either, that's my own, I...
Yes.
I'm comfortable with the job you did, and, and you certainly, I mean, you're closer to the lower level than you are the higher level, in what we gave you, so it's nobody's, not your fault that he was offered what he was, so...
Yeah.
That's my thinking on it. We can do more concise in the future, if we have to do this, and make sure that we're somehow involved in that, in some way, I think could be easy enough to do.
Chief, may I just be really, I wanna be totally clear on the council's role in the appointment and removal of department heads, y'all made this department, so, the person running it, you've also done a, you did an organizational chart, where you made that person department head, that invokes a law, a state law, that makes the mayor responsible for the appointment and removal of the department heads, so, the mayor is responsible for hiring them, disciplining and removing them, but both of those, the hire and the termination are subject to a two-thirds override by y'all, so, the mayor asked you for an affirmative vote, and I think that's very nice, you know, especially for the new hire, but really what you have is a negative vote, you could have said, no mayor, we don't, we don't want that guy, and we don't want him at that price, so, two-thirds of us are gonna override you, and you could do that in hiring and in termination, I just wanted to make sure that I was giving you all the, cause that's a significant power, chief, and I wanted to make sure y'all knew about that.
Oh yeah, I, I would agree on it from the rational.
Well, that's kinda what he's saying, he don't want the mayor to come in and hire him at one price, and then us come back and say, no, we don't want that, we're trying to cut out the middle of all...
Uh, more from a clarification standpoint, I mean, okay. So i-, in general, I'm, I'm supplying you guys with what you need.
I have my call.
For this council meeting.
Yeah.
All right. We're not gonna hire anybody else. Hopefully we're done with it, hopefully we're done with it. Well, council, thank you, we, this was, this was a big agenda with, hopefully we won't spend any more money until the end of the year, so, thank you for, thank you for this. Somebody adjourned this meeting. Yes, Steve, you got them all tonight, in a second, all right, we're done with this.
Now we get outta here. Okay, okay, I see, pick on Mr. Dunlop.
It's like, it's like you guys are stuck to nineteen seventy. I'm amazed he took the shot that much, I don't know him, I don't know anything about it.